I'd like to call to order the December 12th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission and ask the Secretary to call the role, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez is absent. Ms. Casali?
Here.
Mr. Turner is absent. Mr. Appone absent. Mr. Loray?
Here.
Chairman Moffitt, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. This evening, we've got three items, well, two A and a two B. First, let me go, yep. First, a re-review of a site plan that we'd considered in our last meeting and then a final PUD request for the Legacy Estates project. If there's nothing additional to add to the agenda, I'll accept a motion to approve it. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the November 28th meeting. So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
A motion carries. Okay, as I referenced earlier, first item is Site Plan Number 22-13, Dave Constantine for VND Investments.
Good evening, I'm Bob Lynn with Urban Land Consultants and we're going to get this plan approved for my clients and we were here a couple of weeks ago and there was some discussion about having some extra plantings or something along the east property line because some objections in the subdivision on the other side of the ITC corridor. So we revised the plan and I would like to get that approved tonight. I'll show you what we did.
This is the plan that we presented through the board a couple of weeks ago and if you recall, there was some talk about screening the east property line. There's a subdivision over here, it's about 400 feet away, but we agreed to put some trees along here. Now, there was a berman here and we highlighted that on the new plan, so if I flip this over. Now, I've added a cross-section here to show what we're going to do in this area right here. The client has agreed to plant some arborvitus along here, but if you recall, this is the ITC corridor and the ITC people said we could not plant any trees in their easement. And their easement goes from about here to here and another 325 feet east of the property line. So that was our constraint, so I guess if you have any questions, I'd like to try to get our plan approved, if that's possible, tonight.
Okay, what are you proposing then? You're saying that you're not going to plant anything because the ITC won't let you?
Pardon?
My understanding is that you're part of your...
Your mic, yes, mic's not on.
Yeah, this is a double row of arborvitus. There's a little section of it here. They're going to be six feet high and we have a six-foot fence in this area, so that is our proposal.
Okay, thank you. To the planner, any comments?
Yes, Chairman, so with that, those arborvitus that are being planted along the east property line, they'll still have to go in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals because it's a different variance. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention is along with that variance request, we're going to have to include the dumpster because it is located along Jimmy's Drive. It's at the corner right there. So with the ITC corridor easement in the back, I know that they don't want any structures back there, so I think this is an appropriate location, but we can include it in our variance request.
Okay. To the board, any comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Loray.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, to recommend approval to the Township Board for a site plan special land use 22013, Dave Constantine, VND Investments for outdoor RV and trailer storage, Lot 2, parcel 23071410060, and Lot 3, parcel 2307141061 of Shelby Corporate Park, south side of 24 Mile Road, east side of Shelby Parkway, subject to submission of seven sets of final site plans addressing all planning commissions, site plan engineering review comments, and offering a favorable recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Support. Okay, moved by Loray, support by Snyder. Is there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Loray?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair Witsch, yes. Good luck. Okay, next item is a site plan final PUD, number 22-40 for Stephen Mancini for Legacy Village Land Holdings. It's a public hearing, so I'll ask the Secretary to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, McComb County, Michigan, has received a request for the final approval of the following planned unit development. Applicant Stephen Mancini, Legacy Village Land Holdings LLC, 38600 Van Dyke Avenue, Suite 100 Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48312. Proposed use Legacy Village Planned Unit Development, mixed residential and commercial. Location, south side of 25 Mile Road, west of Van Dyke Avenue. Final site plan PUD 22-040. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, December 12th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the planned unit development application. The planned unit development application and site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:00 through 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffitt, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on November 23rd, 2022. There were 138 property owners and four applicants were notified by first-class mail on November 22nd, 2022.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. So, to the Secretary, did we receive any correspondence on this?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. Format for this public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will come up and state the reasons for the request, what they're requesting, their reasons for it. I'll then bring it to the board, we'll ask questions to help us formulate, you know, the decision we'll end up making, a recommendation we'll end up making. I'll then open the floor up to anyone from the public that wishes to come up and offer a comment or ask a question. You need to state your name and your address when addressing the board and then sign in afterwards. There's a sheet at the counter, at the table there. Thing is, this isn't a debate, you know, the process here is for us to gather as much information as we can before we make a decision. So whoever comes up, I will take their comments or questions and then ultimately we'll bring the petitioner back up at the end to answer or comment on any of those that we deem appropriate. At this point, I'll ask the petitioner or representative to state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Eppink with Jay Eppink Partners. We are at 9336 Sashbaugh in Clarkston, Michigan, and I am representing tonight, as you had mentioned, Steve Mancini and his development team with Legacy Land Holdings LLC. We've got our full team here tonight, Rick Sable, Tom Hunt of Noack &amp; Fraus, Mike Labady of our Traffic Engineer. So recognizing that this is a large project, we're certainly here to answer all questions, but we'll try and go through the highlights of it as quickly and as swiftly as we can and then obviously be available to answer questions of the commission as well as those of the township residents.
It is, you know, this has been before this body for many, many years. We've had multiple public hearings. We're finally to the point where it's the final sort of PUD. Actually, and about a month ago or so, we were back reviewing this and had some questions, specific changes. So if you can maybe focus on what's changed?
I'll go right there.
And then, I mean, give a broad overview, but then let's focus on, you know, those items that we'd identified these previous times.
I'll go right there. As you mentioned, the original PUD legacy was approved by the township in 2007. Phase 1 along the western boundary was developed and, you know, some beautiful homes and great neighborhood have been constructed there. In 2020, during COVID, one of the first Zoom meetings, we came in and we had the plan amended and at that point, we introduced some additional townhomes. We reduced our density by about 200, 250 homes from the 2007 plan. We eliminated some of the higher-density, multiple-family, got rid of the eights and tens and twelves, and we came in with duplexes, townhomes, and single-family homes, as well as apartments over on the southern side. At that point, our density went from 766 to 584, so we lost several hundred units. In April, it does seem like only a few months ago, but it was actually in April of this year, we came back before the board and requested final PUD approval as well as final site plan approval for two components, the single-family, the additional single-family homes, and then the townhomes along the main road that cuts east to west on a diagonal. At that point, the Planning Commission had a number of questions, and I'll just bring up that site plan as I'm talking. Had a number of questions and really chief among those were about circulation, traffic, impact to the existing neighbors up in Phase 1, and whether or not it would be possible to create an additional curb cut along 25 Mile Road. The thought was, and we didn't disagree at all, the thought was is if we were to provide an additional curb cut along 25 Mile Road directly into the newly proposed single-family Phase 2, would that put less strain on Phase 1? Would that help circulate the traffic throughout the neighborhood a little bit better? The reason we didn't do that initially is because, quite frankly, the early results that we got from the Road Commission said, no, as we get closer to Van Dyke, we didn't want to do that. But at the Planning Commission's request, we went to work, Tom and his team at Noack &amp; Fraus came up with different alternatives, Mike got involved, we created a traffic study which has been submitted to you, we went to the Planning Committee, or I'm sorry, the Road Commission, and worked closely with those, and at the end of the day, the Road Commission has approved an additional traffic intersection, a curb cut at 25 Mile Road, which you'll see just south of, I've done it myself, screwing up my north and my south, but just east of the existing Phase 1 intersection, we've created a second intersection. So what we are proposing are 67 additional single-family homes. Those lot sizes will be the same as what is found in Phase 1. And what is nice about this is we do have two curb cuts, two connection points to Phase 1, but the main curb cut now out on the 25 Mile Road is directly from these new 67 homes. Mike has done an extensive study, but really shows that a majority, nearly all of that traffic will enter and exit directly from 25 Mile Road and not impact Phase 1. What's nice is the, as part of the townhome component, which we're also seeking final approval on tonight, that builds and extends that diagonal road right from Van Dyke all the way up to Phase 1, again, in the spot that it was always anticipated and where those curb cuts are. What we think is great about that is although it does not connect to the single-family, it actually connects to the Phase 1 single-family, and so we think that that's going to be a great benefit to those neighbors almost immediately, that they'll be able to have direct access onto Van Dyke and also take a little pressure off of the intersection of Van Dyke and 25 Mile Road. Other things that your commission asked us to do in April was, besides traffic, besides developing a full traffic study and answering the question whether or not we can provide the intersection that we just talked about, was to look at landscaping. And so you'll see in your packet that we've really provided a very robust landscape throughout all the phases, primarily along Van Dyke with some new entrance walls, really beautiful monuments that will serve the entire PUD. We've also proposed a trail system, landscape, park-like system around the new pond that has been built, as well as some additional entrance walls and landscaping up at 25 Mile Road. All of the landscaping meets or exceeds the township ordinance, and what's interesting is we've kind of created our own internal boundaries, so we're not only meeting the landscape ordinance as it relates to the boundaries of the entire PUD, but between single-family, between townhomes, between duplexes, we have now internal buffers and green belts and things like that. And so, working with the planning department here at the township, we're ensuring that we're going to meet all those ordinances or exceed them, as I say. In terms of architecture, we've provided architecture for Phase 2 and Phase 4, the single-family and the townhome. It's really high-quality architecture, both in the single-family homes that certainly will be beautiful and add to the community. The townhomes are all two-car garage, two cars in the driveway, brick and masonry materials, a little bit more of a contemporary architecture, which we're really excited about, and we think that that will, based on our marketing studies, be accepted and be absorbed real well in the township. So, again, I think Mr. Sable provided an enormous booklet. We know those details, we're happy to answer your questions, but at your request, we'll stop there and answer any additional thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To the planner, I'm going to jump you ahead a little bit because this has always had a lot of moving pieces, why don't you kind of maybe recap a little bit and give your thoughts.
Thank you, Chairman. So, as Mr. Eppink explained, we have met with the developers and looked at each individual phase. They have corrected all the items that are listed in the Planning Department Engineering comments, also they've addressed my comments. Anything that is outstanding, they're minor and easily correctable on the plans. As far as, you know, the commercial is still there, each phase will have to come in for a final PUD, final review before this board and also the Township Board. So, there's some internal setbacks that, maybe minor deviations, but that is not uncommon with these types of developments, as far as the perimeter setback for the 50-foot requirement. Some encroach in that, but that's only because they're imaginary boundary lines between the developments themselves. Other than that, we've addressed, there was concerns about logias encroaching into the setbacks and perhaps maybe impacting some of the sanitary. We've addressed all those items with the team and...
Okay, seeing none?
Yes. Oh, Chairman, I had a question about the construction entrance. Where is that, and where are they going with that?
There is an existing construction entrance further east, almost as you get to 25 Mile. So, I'll point here and if, you can actually see it on the plans that we submitted to you, but it's right kind of halfway through the southern area. And so we'll use that construction entrance throughout the construction of Phase 2, the single-family. There'll be no construction traffic going through the existing Phase 1. Everything will come in through the rear and we'll work our way out that way. I should say everything will come in there, as well as the new curb cut that we established.
And how long is your projected project to take?
Is your microphone on?
How long is this going to take, again?
Steve, do you have a projection of how long the construction will take?
How many years we're going to be at this?
Steve Mancini, 37532 Hidden Valley Court, Clinton Township, Michigan. You know, we have a builder, Greg Acabelli, I would say that the infrastructure, road sewers will probably take less than six months, and then the homes should progress after that. He's very optimistic, they're still selling homes, I can't predict this economy, but they're very excited to get started, so I would assume that we could expect these homes to build and sell probably even faster than the Phase 1 project that seemed to take a little longer than I would have expected, but we're pretty optimistic.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Okay, this will be the only public hearing, the Planning Commission will hold on this request. All remarks will be entered into the township, into the record for Township Board's evaluation. In this function, we are a recommending body. Ultimately, the Township Board will make the final decision, and somewhat based on the recommendation that we provide to them. At this time, anyone's free to come and ask, make any comments or ask any questions, but I would just need your name and your address.
Good afternoon, my name's David Graham, 54155 Lawson Creek. I did submit a comment, I thought, to the Planning Commission email address on Friday, I guess I wasn't received, so basically I'll just read the email that I sent. I am pleased to see the developer has added additional ingress egress for Phase 2 for the development, however, I'm still concerned about the connection from Phase 4 of the townhouses on to Lawson Creek. The original PUD had a senior assisted living center. Senior assisted center instead of the apartment complex, which generated significantly less traffic and did not have connection so close to Lawson Creek. The original PUD had a connection at the roundabout, which would have directed more traffic onto Van Dyke and less so much onto Lawson Creek. The apartments, you can see from the plan submitted, they do have a connection up here, which is much closer to Lawson Creek versus the original PUD, the only connection for what would have been the senior complex, who would have been way down here at the roundabout. So, with the connection the way it is right now, more traffic is kind of more naturally directed towards Lawson Creek, which is a private drive that the residents have to pay for. The original, the original reason for that Van Dyke connection 2, or the new connection, was for to have a second egress for the original Phase 1. Now that Phase 2 has that second ingress egress, there is no longer that requirement for the connection from Phase 4, the townhouses, to Van Dyke. It's also been mentioned in many of these meetings that the original PUD was amended to eliminate some cut-throughs, so we wouldn't have cut-throughs coming from 25 to Van Dyke and vice versa, avoiding the traffic light. This is an opportunity to eliminate any kind of cut-through whatsoever between 25 and Van Dyke. Right now, with, when the high school gets out, that traffic backs all the way up pretty much from Van Dyke to the high school, and any students who are waiting there in front of Lawson Creek are just going to make that right and keep on moving if they can. It's also been mentioned multiple times that no parking signs should be installed on Lawson The no parking signs will not diminish the amount of traffic that travels on the street. You know, eliminating parking on one side of the street actually might even speed up the traffic because now it will allow for a much more faster thorough-through. Cars won't have to pause or look to see if, with parked cars, if there's oncoming cars or not. The traffic study that was conducted kind of glossed over the fact that it does double the amount of traffic that is currently on Lawson Creek. If you look at it, it does say that there is a, it comes to a conclusion that there's a minimal impact of time that we have to be waited to make the turns onto 25 Mile, but it kind of doesn't point out that the traffic, the amount of traffic that will make those turns will double. Again, just, it's been mentioned before that they want, you wanted to eliminate any kind of cut-through, this is a prime opportunity. I would prefer not to have Phase 4 connect to Lawson Creek, or if it does have to connect for emergency vehicles, we put an emergency gate there for egress or ingress to that section. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Kurt David, 54337 Lawson Creek. I get a few points. I want to talk about traffic cost, why this needs to happen, and safety. Traffic study was commissioned and it seemed, by the developer, and it seems like they got the result they were looking for. I'm not sure why that this couldn't be done by an independent group because the traffic in and out during school hours at Lawson Creek and 25 is very difficult as it is. So, to make it worse with 2, 3, 4X traffic from all these, the high-density developments that they're putting, they're proposing here, is just not a good idea. Traffic on 25 backs up all the way to Lawson Creek and beyond during school letting out. All those high school kids, ways in Google Maps is going to drive them, cutting through the subdivision, and the subdivision has a lot of very young families with kids, and I'm really worried about the safety with that. Cost, so Lawson Creek is a private road, developers not looking to share any costs. Between our phase and the new phases, we have estimates for resurfacing and redoing the road. At the 13 to 15-year mark, it's $190,000 to $2,400 per lot in Lawson Creek, on Lawson Creek. And at the 20 to 25-year mark, we're looking at $437,000, and that's $20,21. That's $530 per lot. So that's all on the residents of Lawson Creek. And why are we doing this? If you look at this current plan compared to the previous plan, it's like the very worst thing you could possibly do for the residents of Lawson Creek, because all those units enter Lawson Creek, if they plan on going on 25 Mile, at the very farthest point south. So they have to travel half a mile along Lawson Creek. It's a very gentle curve and people already pick up a lot of speed. And those renters, if you, you know, like it or not, in the 46 states where it is legal to charge renters more for car insurance than homeowners, they do it. And they're going to be traveling down our street going north. High schoolers are going to be traveling down our street going south. There's a lot of kids on that street. I don't want to see, you know, anything happen to that, and I don't think anybody does because, you know, where do we see some type of a development like this that is connected to a residential street? You don't see it in Shelby Township. I don't know where you see it, where you have a high-density apartment complex attached to the end of a residential street. And if something does happen, I can't imagine that some ambulance chaser isn't going to ask why. And that's, I think that's really, covers everything that I had.
Okay, thank you. Someone back there. Sir, do you sign in?
Good evening, my name is Jason Trasko and I'm at 55082 Timbers Edge. I just had one quick question and it wasn't, didn't seem like it was addressed over on the new projection. That new entrance and exits, I, there's two streets on the north side, one of them's called Apple Lane and the other's Timbers Edge. I'm just wondering where this new entrance and exit to the east side of what's already there with Lawson Creek, where does that, kind of, where does that come in to play with Apple Lane and Timbers Edge? That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ron Konikov at 54363 Lawson Creek. As some of you know, I've been very active in this discussion and I'd just like to point out that in 2007, when this first PUD was developed, the authorization for Lawson Creek being a private narrow street was made under the assumption that there was going to be senior citizen housing on Van Dyke. to be senior citizen housing on Van Dyke. This development was never part of that discussion. Had it been, I would bet that the planning board, or the planning department, would not have approved Lawson Creek to be a private narrow street in anticipation of the additional traffic. So today, we're discussing fitting a square peg in a round hole. I would ask, I would like to follow up on Kurt's statement. I would like to ask, has any benchmarking been done in Shelby, McComb, Oakland, or southeast Michigan to find any development similar to what they're proposing? Because I cannot, I cannot believe the, your mission statement on the website is being adhered to, because that proposes significant risk and significant traffic that was never part of the initial conversation. Again, Lawson Creek is a private narrow street, we're responsible for the maintenance already. In the past year, significant construction traffic has provided significant damage to that street. That's why we've already gotten a quote on resurfacing. There's, yeah, I won't belabor that one. So the question is, if, has any benchmarking been done? Has there been any other community similar to this been proposed anywhere in southeast Michigan? I don't believe so, because I've driven. I've had a member of the Mancini Group suggest there was, and I drove that location, and there is a street off of 23 going north, and it butts a commercial street right behind a subdivision, but it does not go into the subdivision. So I have Google mapped, looked at every possible, I thought, with the time I had, community that would try to resemble something like this. I have not seen it. I think this is definitely a, you're fitting something that can't be done within reason. So I would like to follow up on David's suggestion, that that connection at Lawson Creek at the north be a guarded gate for only emergency traffic, and not make it a thorough fair to the, to Lawson Creek. Again, the original PUD had a straight-through access to 25, all the way to the back of the subdivision, plus to Lawson Creek, plus to Van Dyke. The additional access to 25 for Phase Two is a locked-in access point. Nobody other than Phase One or Phase Two can get in there. Phase, the way it's numbered is Phase Three and Five can't use that to get out to 25. And I know that one of the requirements for these access points was each subdivision of more than 70 homes had to have two access points. Well, now with the Phase Two access open to 25, ours at 25, we now have two. We don't need the access point to the north for Phase Five. That it's not a requirement per the planning department. So we would ask, I would ask personally, that you review this and look at the suggestion that we make that connection for emergency use only, because otherwise, as has been explained, you'll have the high school traffic coming down Lawson Creek, taking that cut-through out to Van Dyke and bypassing the light. And same thing in the morning, they're going to take a left, because you have to wait two cycles at Van Dyke and 25 to make a left. That's minimum at school time. So they're going to, if there's a light there at Van Dyke, they're going to take that left, cut through the subdivision, and come out on 25. The other couple of things, and I won't take too much more time, is, has there been any discussion on where the bus stops are going to be? Because right now, it's at 25 and Lawson Creek, and the schools have said they're not going to come into the subdivision. Does that mean the bus stop for Phases Two, Three, and Five are going to use that same bus stop? We haven't had any direction from the planning department, what they're going to do there. The other thing is, we've been told that the developer wanted to isolate mailboxes at the same location that ours are, and centralize at least Phase Two there. Where's the, where's the discussion of where the mailboxes are going to be? Are the apartments going to have centralized mailboxes? Most certainly, because the post office is going to do that. What about the duplexes and the townhomes? Are they going to have their own mailboxes, or are they going to be centralized? And where are they going to be put? That all comes down to the situation where you got all this increased in traffic, and you have all these stopping points, bus stops, mailboxes. And just to the final point, the point, they, the developers have said many times, they've reduced density. That's smoke and mirrors. They, yes, the number of people, number of units has gone down, but they've taken a large apartment complex for senior citizens, I don't remember the number, I thought it was over 400, that would never, ever, if they had a car, drive down to Lawson Creek to exit on 25. There was no traffic from that location. They replaced it with at least 200 townhouses and duplexes, all of which, if they're like Lawson Creek residents, are going to have two cars. And if they have school-aged children, they are not going to go out to Van Dyke. They're going to come out Lawson Creek, because all three schools are to the west of Lawson Creek. So they're going to come through the north cut-through and pick up Lawson Creek and go down to 25, either to the bus stop, or they're going to make the left to go to the schools. So density is not reduced. Density has been expanded exponentially. The last thing, it's not, it's not a favor to Lawson Creek to have a cut-through to Van Dyke. The only homes who would possibly utilize that would be the homes up in the cul-de-sac, about 20 homes. Anybody on Lawson Creek is not going to drive all the way to Van Dyke. That doesn't make sense. They're going to go out Lawson Creek, go left, or they're going to go right. So thank you.
No, is there anyone else supposed to comment?
Good evening, my name is Phil Lefada, 54207 Lawson Creek Drive. I fully support all the comments made by Dave, Kurt, Ron, except I want to focus on one. Number one priority. I have two little girls, just moved in six months ago. One's about to turn five, one's about to turn one. And I think in the future, how many times my girls are going to want to walk with me to the mailbox? And I hear about all this increased traffic, and we all know the amount of irresponsible drivers that are out there. Alls it takes is one, one, for something significant to happen that we, none of us want to hear about. We hear too much about in that news. I don't want to be that person. I don't want to be that with my little girls. I'm recommending, I fully support, that be blocked off, or used for emergency vehicles only, and that connector Phase Four at Lawson Creek Drive. Thank you for your time.
Sir, will you please sign in?
Hi, good evening, I'm Manuel Martinez, I hope you understand my accent. I live in 54873 Lawson Creek Drive. I moved in a year and a half ago with my wife and two little kids, one and two and a half years old. And I do support all the statements my neighbors did. I don't want to explain again what to explain, it makes totally sense. I just want to share why we moved to Shelby Township, to find a safe place to live and comfortable with the family. We moved from Utica to a very busy area, to Shelby Township, to a nice quiet street. Now finding out all of this makes us wonder what will be tomorrow. So again, I'm not going to take too much time, but just to share what my neighbors shared, our concern for the safety of everybody and the concern of the extra traffic. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Connie David, I live at 54337 Lawson Creek. And we moved into Shelby Township in 2019, and I have to say, we love it. It's a great neighborhood, very, very happy. I was a resident of Troy for 17 years, and I was in the situation before. So we used to live at, I don't know if you know where Taganagorga Restaurant is, but we, there's this light right there at Player Drive. And the problem with that is, if you follow Waze, which I follow Waze all the time, because with all the construction, you have to, because you can't use the same route more than once. And the problem with our old neighborhood was, if you're, if you're heading north on Rochester, and you wanted to turn onto Square Lake, Waze automatically will reroute you to turn right onto Player, go down maybe not even quarter mile, left onto Hillmore, and boom, there you are, right on Square Lake. It's going to be the same thing. It's going to be the school kids, it's going to be any other person that's traveling. Anytime that you are traveling, heading east on Van Dyke, and you want to go south, or, I'm sorry, east on 25 Mile, and you want to go south on Van Dyke, it's going to reroute you. I mean, I'm sure you have all used Waze at some point. How many times have it taken you down a residential street? I mean, think about it. I'm guilty of it myself, in especially a neighborhood that I don't live in. But it's, there's no point. It's just, there's no point. All we're asking is not to have the connection. That's all we want, and that's why we're all here. It's Christmas, I mean, we're all busy. But we all showed up. Well, not all, but, I mean, we tried. But that's my, the one thing I wanted to point out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Karen Franklin, I live at 54414 Lawson Creek. My question to the board is, if you do authorize this, will the burden of the maintenance of Lawson Creek Drive be held strictly to the people who live on that street? Or will Shelby Township now carry part of the burden to maintain that road?
Good evening to all, this is Satish, I live in 54262 Lawson Creek. And I would like to second the same thought what my neighborhood are saying. I have a kid, like five-year-old and 10-year-old, and obviously, we moved from Rochester Hills for the same privacy, but if we have the more traffic, I believe it's going to be tough for our kids as well. In fact, even in the morning, when you go for the school stops, you don't see some of the cars even stopping when the buses are there. They don't even stop many times, unless cops are there, and sometimes, some of the opposite school buses are there, they're stopping, but when the traffic opens, we feel it's going to be more problem for our kids. So I'd like to second the same, and if you can review that, do the appropriate actions. Thank you.
Sign in, please. Anyone else?
Hi, Chris Oberleitner, 54415 Lawson Creek. Just a couple of things, all the previous people have good points. I have a point. One time, I work at General Motors Tech Center, and coming home, there was an accident at 25 and Van Dyke, and also one at the same time on mound and Van, or 25 and mound. That's with no traffic, okay? We were the third house in, on Lawson Creek, there's no, you know, we only had three houses filled, and if you had four or 500 people more in an area, that, we're moving. We're selling our house, we're moving, because you will not be able to go east, west, north, south, any direction. Another point is the wear and tear on our street already. We didn't expect to have, you know, six years in the building process, the construction, wear and tear on that street is ridiculous. If you come out, there's 22 cracks between my house and the mailboxes already, and that's about a couple hundred yards, okay? It's awfully expensive to replace the road, and I don't think anybody on Lawson Creek wants to foot that bill. There is a lot of wear and tear. If you come out every day, it's just one thing after another. Excavators driving on our street, they say they have rubber wheels, whatever, yeah, right. Anyhow, there was one other point, and that was the construction. We would like to have the two spurs blocked before the construction commences, because no construction guy's going to come through a dirt road, or however they're planning. They're going to come right down Lawson Creek, make an immediate left, or make, go down farther and make another left, and they'll be working there. So that's one item added that I think we missed covering. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Mark Nardone, I'm at Lot 40 in Lawson Creek, 54, 53867 Lawson Creek, and I'm in the court, way in the south end. And just to add on a little bit to what the last gentleman said about street cracking, okay? He said up to the mailbox, but he didn't say around the court as well, okay? Now, Lawson Creek, the court is used as a turnaround for trucks, for, I guess you'd call them double bottoms, the two big trailers, and many times, Messina trucking comes in there. And I think they just come in to turn around, because there's a place near 25 and Van Dyke. So we get a lot of traffic. And my granddaughters, two granddaughters, live on my street. So I'm just concerned about the safety, the roadway is cracking, and like I said, it's always a turnaround. So I think that if you don't cut that off, you're going to have people even turning around using our court. So that's, that's another concern I have, because there also is, the court is just about all built up now, and there are more young families in there with children. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Danny Morogi, I live at 54774 Lawson Creek. I'm here kind of for the same reason, I brought my kids here, they, kind of told them the story about what's going on, and the safety of the community. I invite you guys all to come out to the street, it's a very, very narrow street. Most of the week is kind of occupied by not just just traffic, but also the services, the landscaping services, snow plowing, I'm assuming is going to come in. I moved in earlier this year, and it's been, it's been already, it's already been pretty bad. There's been an accident where two cars were totaled right on the street, about six houses in from 25 Mile, and it's been, it's already been, been pretty bad regarding traffic, there's a lot of waiting for cars pulling out of driveways, a lot of waiting for cars to maneuver around cars, hidden cars when they pull out of the, you know, driving parallel, when they're all parked on the same side of the street, pulling out, some cars aren't very visible, so they're, when the cars are driving down, you know, near, there's been a lot of near misses, and for the kids, when they, when they get to school in the morning, when they drive to the corner where the bus stop is in the mornings and in the afternoon, it gets pretty congested in that area, just waiting for, just waiting for the bus stop while, while that process is happening. So I just want to reiterate basically what everybody else is saying here on, on the safety for the kids. It'd be beneficial, I don't think, I'm a big fan of big development, and I don't think it's at, it should be at the expense of, of kids or anybody else that lives in this neighborhood. Thank you, that's it.
Anyone else? Go on once, okay.
Good afternoon, my name's Larry Fair, 54093 Lawson Creek. And I would just say, to echo what my neighbors have brought upon you, also, I'd like to say, about 30- or 40-year veteran from Troy, Michigan, I've been in Shelby for two years, and I'm asking this committee to utilize full due diligence, take your time. I hope good notes were taken, and considerate of all these good neighbors and their concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Go on once, twice, okay? Bring it back to the board, as a petitioner. Mr. Hampick, do you want to come address? Mr. Ebnek, do you wanna come address?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be glad to, appreciate the comments, be glad to respond. Really, almost entirely about traffic, which is understandable. In terms of that last connection, I know in 2020, after the Planning Commission made its recommendation, and the board ultimately voted in favor, I think unanimously, to approve the amended PUD to, to, to the new uses, as we're talking about tonight. Supervisor Staffakis, I think during the public hearing here, as well as at the board, understood the concerns about that connection, and so he had a series of study committee, study meetings put together with our team, with the neighbors, and with the various township departments. At that point, the fire chief was involved with those meetings, and he let me know, and, and let the board and the supervisor know that your ordinance calls for a cul-de-sac to be no longer than 600 feet. Shelby Township does approve temporarily roads that are longer than 600 feet, but ultimately with the, with the planning purpose that, that those roads ultimately cannot extend longer than 600 feet. And it's really, as I was educated by the, the fire chief, it's not only for emergency access of trucks, fire trucks, emergency vehicles and so forth, but it's if an emergency happened, it gives the residents opportunities to get out in other directions. So in other words, if I'm trying to get to work or school, and, and there's a rescue squad a few doors down, I have different options. And so at that point, I, you know, my memory tells me that the, that the fire chief was very specific with the supervisor, and ultimately came back to the board, that, that that connection to Lawson Creek was absolutely required from a fire and safety point of view. And at that point, my understanding was, is that just a temporary breakaway gate or something, that doesn't meet the requirements of the township? Because again, their intent is not only to have emergency access for vehicles, but for residents to have alternate access points as well. So again, that's, that's my memory. That's what, what I think the minutes would show from the, the board, but certainly that would be available to check again with, with the Planning Commissioner. Perhaps Ms. Mishitz was involved and may remember as well. In terms of, of general connections, it's important to, again, remember that these connections, these three connections onto Lawson Creek were designed right from the very beginning. In fact, that's why they exist now, right? They're, they're curb cuts with the anticipation to connect to it. At the time that those were built, at the time that that was proposed, and at the time that many of those initial homes were sold, this was scheduled for a much higher density. About 437 multiple-family homes, all making those connections. When we talk about density, and I, I, I understand the point of, hey, we're, we're eliminating the senior housing that was originally planned, and we're replacing that with people who perhaps drive more. If you look at the numbers, and I wish I could put up a chart. But, but the original plan had 437 multiple-family homes. Eightplexes, tenplexes, twelveplexes, so 437. We're replacing those homes of multiple family. I'm not talking about the senior housing yet, so 437, we're replacing that with 428. So if you wanna look at it, it's almost apples to apples, 437 versus 428 now, so about nine homes fewer. The difference is, is that we are replacing the 250 senior apartments, senior living, with 64 single-family. So the, the, the density has come down on the multiple family, and they've gone from high-density 12-plex buildings to duplexes, townhomes, and then the apartments. And the senior has been replaced, 250 to 64. So our net density has come down. The types of multiple-family have come down significantly to a much lesser empty-nester duplex-type unit. And then the senior building, which certainly would've had employees, certainly would've had deliveries, would've had all those things, has been replaced with 64 townhomes that now have their own exit out to, to 25 Mile. So we do believe it's a softer use from a traffic point of view. Our, our traffic study that was approved in 2007, and our updated one from 2022 certainly proves that there's less traffic and more diverse traffic. I'll just go through the different comments as well, but again, they, they all had similar reasonable costs. In terms of costs, the way that the PUD is set up, and the way the PUD was originally set up, is each of the five phases plus commercial are all responsible. The homeowners for the single-family phase two, the homeowners for the townhomes, are all responsible to take care of their own internal roads. So each of the phases that we showed there, each of those homeowners will, will take care of their own phases. There's also what we would call the collector road, which is Lawson, or, which is Grand Boulevard, the, the diagonal road across. Typically, all the phases would also share in, in that cost. What we've specifically done with this PUD agreement is excluded Phase One. To say, okay, Phase One, you certainly, you're existing residents, you do not have to, or we wouldn't ask them to participate in maintenance costs for Grand Boulevard, for the, for the diagonal road. The other four phases will all share in those costs. So in essence, each of the phases will take care of their own roads, just like Lawson Creek is taking care of its phase. The other four, excluding Phase One, will take, also have to contribute their annual HOA fees to take care of that Grand Boulevard. So in essence, Lawson Creek, the residents will certainly have full access use of, of Grand Boulevard, but won't be paying for it. And that's, that's part of the PUD agreement, which has been submitted. Bus stops and mailboxes, certainly those are controlled by the US Post Office and the school district. We would anticipate that single-family phase two, the new single-family, the 64 homes, will have their own bus stop out at 25 Mile. That's certainly where we would anticipate a majority of the school-aged children living. The duplexes, which will come as part of Phase Three, those are really intended to be empty nesters, and, and may certainly have a few children, but we would expect very few. The townhomes really are geared towards empty nesters or young professionals. They may have some schoolchildren, but very few. And then the apartments, we, we certainly would expect to have some school-aged children there. They'll have a, a school bus stop either at the entrance to the apartments, or down at Van Dyke. But again, mailboxes are proposed on the site plans that you were submitted. New single-family has two mailbox locations within its development. The townhomes have several mailbox locations within those parking areas along Grand Boulevard. Those are our suggestions. Ultimately, the post office will determine where those go. The, the last question, I just, I wanna answer this question. I think I can do it graphically. The one fellow who lived across the street talked about where the, where the connection was to Timberlake. I'll show that. But we're really falling in between those two streets with our new entrance. So this is the old plan, but, but we'll have, because I don't have them on the new plan. But you'll see that Apple Lane is just immediately east of Lawson Creek, and then Timber Ridge is across the street. What we're doing is we're actually lining up with Timber Ridge, and then Apple Creek is just to the west of us. Let me zoom in on that one. But again, from a, from a road commission point of view, they thought it was important to have a four-way intersection. So just not as good with the computer. But long story short, we are lining up with our new entrance with Timber, Timber Ridge. Apple Lane is just to the west of us.
Okay.
Were there any other questions or thoughts that were on your list, Mr. Chairman?
So every version of this development envisioned having a connection in that southwest corner of the, of the development, correct?
That's correct.
Connecting, okay.
That's correct.
Okay. And to the planner, there was a question about sort of the validity of the, the, the transportation, the traffic study. We did have in our, the township's engineer review that traffic study and concurred with what was...
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. I guess I'll, 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 I'll sort of start it from our sort, and I don't necessarily need to do this, but I know a large group and spoke with the veracity of, I look at the traffic study, and, I mean, it makes, you know, that one more car to that neighbor and to that road would be too many, and understand that position, let alone, you know, multiple. But in the grand scheme of, of traffic, it really, you know, and, and in the totality of the township, and the totality of the traffic that goes through there, it's, it's probably, doesn't seem to me, in my opinion, to be that significant. The, and also with the recognition, just like water seeking its own level, so does traffic. And so if, if there's, if it's backed up to get onto 25 Mile, then folks are gonna come down to Van Dyke. And then how this is structured, it, it does look pure to me, and the traffic engineer sort of concurred that even before I even read it, as I looked at it and thought, you know, most of that, most of, all that, the, 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 the multi-family property is all gonna come out to Van Dyke. That's gonna be the easy way, because it's a five-lane road. It's easy to get, you know, north and south, and probably east and west to that, to wherever they're gonna go. And at those times for the schools, that traffic's gonna, is gonna come out to Van Dyke, because it's much easier to make a left turn and a left turn onto Van Dyke. And in terms of sort of cutting through Lawson, to cut through to get to Van Dyke, even in hard times, to go all that to meander at 25 miles an hour, you know, because there is gonna be, you know, there will be impediments to, to, to flying through, that still is gonna take longer than just going the, the mile road to Van Dyke, you know? And the joys of like, or not of being on this, you know, again, I've lived in this community a long time. My family's been here almost 50 years, and, you know, I've been here a good chunk of that, and I live sort of in that area. So I know Vincent Joe's all too well, well, my wife knows it far better than I do. But, so, I mean, it's not like we're not sensitive to, and frankly, if the answer, you know, if the choices are nothing or something, it's easier to get, you know, nothing, you know, better for your... But I think what they have proposed is reasonable, you know? Frankly, this was what, our 12 once upon a time, back in the day, it was a horse farm, you know, and from a horse farm, but then was had a real high density, and it's sort of a, it's called a legacy state, I think, a legacy to, to their parents, to their mother, you know, that they wanted sort of the last development to be something that was unique for the township, because the family has a lot of history within this community. Again, I think I was here when they first, I was the only person on this board I'd been on, and probably someone would argue too long from, from where, when it began, and sort of see its evolution. And I think it's still sort of true to, you know, what they proposed. You know, accepting, accepting sort of the changes in, in the, in the economy and, and sort of the neighborhoods. And there were some other crazier things that I've said no to. They wanted to put a mirage there. So, and I, you know, I, I had to be, I was the one that had said no to that. So it's not like this isn't a two-way thing. But I think we've gotten to a place where it's, it's, you know, it's, it's good, it's, you know, it's, I think it's reasonable for the township, and it's reasonable for the developer, they own the property, they have a right to develop it. So with that, is there a motion to close, Public Karen?
So move.
Move and support it all in favor. Aye. Aye. Our recommendation on this request, based on the followings. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use. Protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. This evening, we may, this commission may recommend approval, disapprove the request, or table it to evaluate the information further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion. We did that already, but do you want to ask, do you have other questions? All right. Do you have a question?
I do.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe it's for the planner, the first one that I have. In the future, the entrance on Lawson Creek coming out to 25 Mile Road, would they ever entertain a traffic light that might align with either Apple Lane, or is it Timber, Timberwick?
Timber Ridge.
Yeah, that would be up to the Macomb County Department of Roads. That's not something that the township would...
Right. Yeah, I just wondered if that would ever be on their horizon.
I can't answer that.
And then my next question is, and I'm not sure if it's for Julie or the, Mr. Ebnek. The Lawson Creek, that it's, it's a private drive. I'm just wondering with the residents having to fund the private drive maintenance with adding now all the other traffic to it, how, refresh my memory, how did this become a private drive? And why is it such?
Within the PUD, they'll all be private drives, so it's not unusual. It's part of the master plan, the PUD, the, the master plan of this development, and the plan unit development that, that was approved. It's a little unusual, frankly, because of time. You know, had the economy not crashed in 2007, 2008, it's very likely that, well frankly, it's very likely that, that higher-density, eightplex, tenplex development would have been built. And, and it's a little bit of an unusual situation because of time that our Phase One residents really have become, you know, the, our neighbors, rightly so, and those people who are here tonight. So all the roads are private. Those aren't gonna be any different than what'll be built in Phase Two or, or Phase Four. We are meeting the new township standards over those 10 or 12 years. The township and the county standards have, have changed, so the depth of the roads, the width of the roads has changed, or meeting the current standards with the, with the newly proposed roads. But they'll all be private in terms of, of their maintenance and everything else, as I explained. Each individual component will be responsible for long-term maintenance of their roads, as well as, short of Phase One, they'll be, they'll all be required to share in the maintenance of that Grand Boulevard, that diagonal road. So it's very, very similar to, to Phase One and Phase Two will be exactly the same in terms of responsibility of the homeowners in terms of maintenance.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Hang on, okay, Cassali first.
Is it true that no...
Second, Mr. Larry.
Sure.
Commissioner Cassali.
Thank you. Based on, on those comments, then the, the, what did, what would it entail to make the Collector Boulevard include Lawson Creek now that we're, this may become a reality, that there's more traffic on Lawson Creek? Did you ever consider making that a collective Boulevard also, and have all five phases participate in?
Well, it's something that we haven't discussed, or haven't discussed with the community or through the PUD agreement. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I think I'd probably be better to answer that question. Rick, I think, correct me if I'm wrong. We are open to a meeting with the HOA of Lawson Creek and see if there's a way to amend. This is legal, so you may, maybe I can answer it pretty clearly. Richard Sable here. And what you have is you have a, a document that's filed, a master deed with Legacy Estates, the single-family one. And in there, it has a provision that the other components that are proposed here would turn around and share in that, in taking care of that. Now, what we did was I talked to the association's attorney over the past two months, and then he called me back a few days ago, because I wanted to work it out with the association. So that's something we can definitely work out with the association. What we thought when I explained to the attorney that it was, that he might look at it as fair, and I think he kind of agreed with me of saying, "Look, let's turn around and just have this proposed where, uh, Single Family One, that's what I referred to, Lawson Creek Drive, let them take care of their own, and then they won't have to pay or contribute to the front entranceway along Van Dyke or the Grand Boulevard." The reason because is that in that master deed, it specifically provides that, that Estates at Legacy would have to contribute to any, what, what you call a collector road. And that's what Grand Boulevard is. It's a collector road. So the idea that we had in talking to Steve Mancini was, let's try to not put that burden of the collector road on, you know, on the Estates at Legacy Village. But we're open to resolving anything with, with the association there, just to let you know that. And the attorney just called me like two days ago. He and I had the discussion, and we're more than willing to turn around and sit down. But there are provisions in that master deed that cover for those issues there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Laray.
Sure. A comment was brought up about construction traffic. Is it correct that no construction traffic is prohibited down Larson Drive?
Yes, that's the case, and, and what we plan to do is, is provide the alternate construction access. Whether or not, you know, police and fire would allow that to be temporarily closed, I, I can't speak to that. We have not discussed that. But I think it's our goal to enforce...
But I think it's our goal to enforce, you know, and we can obviously sign it, that no construction traffic is to use, you know, Lawson Creek Drive, Phase One, the, single-family Phase One.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so back to.
The other thing I did want to clarify is the road widths, and maybe Julie can help me on this, but the road widths on the single-family two and the, what we call the collector roads, we've upped those to county standards, which is wider and deeper than township standards. My understanding is it's the township's goal to future, you know, to, to make that a township standard, but something we've offered to the township is to widen and deepen the sections on these new phases. I believe the, the single-family one is actually wider at the time than, than the township standard, if, if I'm not mistaken.
It may have been. I'd have to look into that as far as that, but that is correct. And the new roads, all in the development, will be built to Macomb Department of Standards, Macomb County Department of Road Standards.
If I can just address that one issue about the current maintenance of Lawson Creek Drive, typically, if you look at that master deed, and this one's pretty typical, all of the lot owners, not just the current homeowners, but also lot owners that are vacant lots, have to contribute for that, you know, for that repair and maintenance. That's where the issue is coming up. And if you have a builder or construction traffic that turns around and creates some damage to a road, there's provisions in that master deed to where the association could go after that contractor and assess them, you know, for that damage to the road. And that's not unusual to happen. It happens in a lot of developments. So there are protections and provisions in that master deed. And the association does have a competent attorney. His name is Ed Zomanski, is familiar with those provisions. And I worked with him before on other developments such as this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Casali.
May I ask Ms. Mitchis for clarification on this motion for this part of the public hearings? Are we just with Phase Two, single-family, or is this the overall?
We have two motions on the table. It would be a final, excuse me, it would be a final PUD motion for the overall development and then for the single-family and the townhomes. So the senior paperwork, the two motions.
At this time, we're going to do both motions?
I'm not sure.
No. This time, we're just going to do the, the PUD, the final PUD, and then we'll bring up, we'll do the site plan next, re-review the site plan.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to recommend to the Township Board for final PUD Site Plan 22-012. Phase Two residences at Legacy Village and Phase Three Legacy Village Villas. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Motion to recommend approval to the Township Board for final PUD Site Plan 22-40. Legacy, Legacy Village overall plan located at the southwest corner of 25 Mile Road in Van Dyke, subject to departmental engineering planning commission comments and township attorney approval of the PUD amendment. Each phase within the overall plan shall be subject to final PUD Site Plan approval by the Township Planning Commission and Board of Trustees.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Moore, support by Casali. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing non, Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
No.
Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Lorrain.
Yes.
And the chair will choose. Next item is Site Plan Number 22-12, Stephen Mancini for Legacy Village. And these are the re-review of the site plans for Phase Two and Phase Three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't go, obviously, through the entire plan again. Phase Two would be the, the 64 single-family homes. As noted, the, the real change from the earlier plan was the addition of the curb cutout on the 23, and we actually eliminated previously, it was 67 lots, we are now at 64 lots, so we've eliminated to accommodate that, that curb cut. Have eliminated three lots and reduced the density. Phase Four, our component four are the townhomes along Grand Boulevard. Those were previously shown as 92 units. We are proposing tonight 92 units, so there's been no change in density. What has changed there is, is essentially the rearrangement of some of those to create bigger and better setbacks among adjacent uses. We've, we've modified those to accommodate grading, stormwater, things like that, working closely with the township's engineer and planning department. So Phase Two again is the single-family. Phase Four are the townhome components coming in sometime in the future would be final site plan, plans for the duplexes, the apartments, and ultimately the commercial as well. Thank you.
And on the, on the, on the, on the townhomes, I understand that, that you won't be marketing those to an allocator to, to rent them, but.
No, those, those will be built as for-sale units.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I mean, recognizing if someone, individual buys it and does what they do, that's.
That, that's right. If, you know, my wife and I bought it and relocated it for two years, we would be permitted to rent it, but we're not looking and will not look for a, an apartment developer to come and build and rent all of them, no.
Okay. To the board, any questions for the, on the, on these two phases? To the planner for her comments?
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. So I addressed some of the comments along with the final PUD. We also reviewed with the developer Phase, the Phase Two, the single-family and also the townhomes and made sure that those lots also, including any logias, fit comfortably on that lot and made sure that there's adequate screening between the developments and no encroachments into any sewers. The other, you know, minor comments are easily addressable on the site plan. I also wanted to make a comment. Section 3.37 E2, mixture of PUD in our township ordinance, Mr. Konikov brought it up earlier and I just wanted to mention it, has a ratio of what could be developed in a PUD, the mixture of components of residential zoning districts. So in that, although I can't name any developments off the top of my head where there would be single-family connecting to multiple and, and different uses, they are becoming common. The developments of this type are becoming common. And in this ordinance, where we have the breakdown of what you can include in a PUD and ratios of percentages of different developments and that addresses that, in this section of the ordinance has been in our ordinance for a long time. So this is not anything new. It, it's, it's typical, but again, I, I can't specifically name a project without, you know, doing some research.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions on, on this request, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casali.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the Township Board for final PUD Site Plan 22-012. Phase Two residences of Legacy Village and Phase Three Legacy Village Villas located at the southwest corner of 25 Mile Road in Van Dyke, subject to all departmental engineering, legal, and planning commission comments.
Support.
Motion by Casali, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing non, Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
No.
Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Lorrain.
Yes.
And the chair will choose. Planning Director's report?
I don't have anything, Chairman.
Okay. Our agenda does allow for business from the floor, so if anyone wants to take three minutes to make a comment, you're welcome to do that.
Good evening again. Dave Graham, 54155, Lawson Creek. Just two comments. I know it was mentioned before that at one of the last meetings with the fire department, it was said that you couldn't have a cul-de-sac longer than 600 feet without having a second exit. I have to imagine at that time, Phase Two with the second exit off 25 was not part of that plan and part of that discussion. I'd like to point that out, that now that Phase Two has a second entrance on 25, I'd like to have that re-looked at. Like to point out too, that all the residents have had no issue whatsoever with the overall changes within the development. We have not said we don't want apartments. We have not said we don't want duplexes, townhouses. We've been fine with it. Ever the developer has proposed, we are just asking that that section of the road not connect to us. And I would just ask, you know, one last time, that there's the section, the section that at the southwest end where you can kind of see the apartments kind of connect up to where the duplex is at, that maybe at least that even get cut off. Like I said, the, before, the senior citizen, senior citizen complex only connected at the roundabout, which would have directed a lot of that traffic onto Van Dyke. With that connection, with the apartments now connecting so close to Lawson Creek, that gives them a lot more access to come in right on our street. It's also been pointed out that the new streets are going to be wider. I applaud that because our current street does not meet Macomb County standards. I talked about this last time, how our street's only 22 feet wide. It's 20, you know, the standard's 24 feet wide. I'd also like to point out too, that Lawson Creek, we do not have a proper egress lane turning right onto 25 Mile. Lawson Creek Drive is not a safe road. It was not built with the intention of all the traffic from the original other phases going on to that. The original PUD also had a lot more fluidity with the traffic and allowing the traffic to move about the phases differently. This pretty much directs all the traffic either down Lawson or down the main Boulevard. Thank you.
Yep, we have three minutes.
Again, Ron Konikov, 54363, Lawson Creek. Jim brought up something regarding the PUD, PUD. In 2007, it appears that they knew that they were going to put a multiple residential complex in their apartments, townhouses, duplexes, some mixture of that, and not have the senior citizen complex? Do you know that every single person that's bought a lot or a house in that subdivision, Phase One, was presented a PUD not at all like what you're seeing today? And if they had known this in 2007, and the planning commission knew this in 2007, and we had been presented the PUD with a senior citizen housing, you might want to, you might want to ask why? That's, that's, I mean, every single one, I've, I've, I've talked, I've spoken to maybe 45, 46 homeowners. Every single one of them was under the impression that there was going to be a senior citizen housing, not this.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair. Is there support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.